Committee meeting to order. I know Bob Whitebreaks on his way. He'll join in the process. We've got a couple of folks here tonight and I'm going to start the agenda with that. We've got the library here to present their budget, so we'll handle that and discuss that. Then our representative from our actuary, C-Biz, is now here and we'll talk next about the police pension. I would like to throw in a couple of questions about O-PED, so you have something to bring back at the next meeting with your colleague. And then last, the third kind of open question as we go into the budget cycle later at the business meeting is going to be our capital accounts and capital projects over the next couple of years. And so I'm going to have a discussion with the committee to wrap up what our process ought to be for working with the whole council, mayor, the office, to prioritize those and give some policy guidance as part of the 2017 budget. So with that, turn it over to the library.
Okay. I got my copies. I'll look through these. So I have another meeting to go to and I wanted to get this in. Luckily, I have one for Sean here. Now you're writing for Sean. Okay. I'm here because I wanted to make sure that all of you are aware of and you know specifically who the library is and what we do and so forth and why we're asking for what we're asking for. I just want to make that clear. So the first page I have on here basically tells you what the library is. We have one full-time director who collects benefits. And then we have six part-time and they do not collect benefits. Three of those part-time are what we call assistant-led employees, library employees. And they have special functions like the social media, the technology, the certified, they have to be certified to do the McLink stuff and all of that. And then the others are more clerical. Reason we have only part-time is because we've been trying to watch the budget so that the borough doesn't have to pay benefits. That's the bottom line. So we've been trying really hard to keep that as only part-time. We would much prefer to have two or even three part-time people. When we did the budget, we gave three part-time people with three percent rates and the library director with a three percent rate, which we understood is what's going to be given to the borough employees. If that's different, then you don't want to change it, but that's what we thought.
Fringe is in line.
That's right. You go in line with what the borough employees are. In the budget, you're going to see, I'm going to show it to you, but you have what we call non-salary funding. We have an audit increase in there of $3,500. That's because according to state law, we have to have an audit every year. But two of the three years are reviews. And so the only cost is about $3,000. But every third year, we have to have a full audit and that costs us the extra $3,500. So that's why we have to do that. McLink, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that stands for Montgomery County Library Internet Network. They increase their charges to us and that by $1,366. That allows all of our community to get books from anywhere else in Lower Marion or Montgomery County, actually, and have it delivered to our library.
So it's more than just the catalog. It's actual the transportation of the books back.
Absolutely. You go online and you say, oh, I want to read War and Peace.
My husband is a heavy user.
Yeah. And we don't have it in our library, so we have it.
Yeah, something I didn't understand. Thanks for that.
I'm telling you.
Huge.
Yeah. Oh, it's a wonderful thing.
It's a great thing.
Yeah. I get all kinds of stuff that way. And then last but not least, we're asking for a replacement of the $4,000 that was cut last year because we need to kind of catch up a little bit on some of our orders. All other expenses, as you'll see on the library, the detailed library gives, have they ever been maintained or cut, depending on how much we need. The additional funding for the Narvik Library that we get from other people now is state funding, which is less than 6% of our overall budget. And then the rest of it is raised by the staff or the library board. And that amounts to 14.2% of the overall budget. And we do that by our community letter, by our events like our library, our book sales, all kinds of events, things like that, raise money.
How has that, how's fundraising been the last couple of years?
It's been good. It's tough. I mean, the community is very supportive. So we've got, I forget how many thousands of dollars in there for the community, but we'll see it in a second. But they've been very responsive in sending in money when we send out them. We only send out the one letter, although this year we may do what we call a non-dead sale letter.
So you're budgeting $25,000.
So that's what we're projecting that we can do. Just so you know, and we send you the statistics of course, but circulation is up, patrons in the library is up, wireless minutes is up. Always in there doing that. One of our board members did a value service analysis, which I've attached, which shows that 12.2% of the value, for every dollar that the borough spends with the library, 12.2% of value comes back to the community. And we just recently did a customer survey to see who, what everybody thinks and what we should do differently and so forth. And we're reviewing them, but one of the things we acted on right away was put in changing tables in the bathrooms. People needed that. The kids, the parents needed that. And we put them in both men's and the women's.
Thank you.
You're welcome. They also asked for more community room space and so forth. And so we're going to be talking to the property committee too about how we use the community room and how we can use the community room better for more activities for the libraries as we go forward. We want to talk about that, but that's for then and after. So the total number that we're asking for is 199,747, which is an increase of 13,993 or seven and a half percent. That's all we're asking for. Here you'll see next to this, last to this, is a line-by-line. We go over this every month to make sure that we, line-by-line, don't go over our budget. Or if we do go over on one category, then we make up for it in another category. So you can see going down here, all the income that we expect to get and we commit to. And then the expenses for things like our audio books, the auditors, again, I told you that went up because of the audit. Books for adults, books for children, Fun Drive, special events, McLink, again, I told you about. Some marketing, we don't do much. The payroll, of course, is always significant. Periodicals and magazines and so forth, the photocopy or postage, professional meetings for training for the staff, not much, but some. Programs, that would be the children's programs primarily. We have a lot of children's programs in the summer. And you've probably seen the reports and Janine always talks about those in the reports. Computer supplies, library supplies, office supplies, telephone and internet access and so forth, DVDs and then security. We have a pad for the staff.
Do you have, do you have actuals for 2015 and 2016 as well?
Yes, I do. I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you.
That would be great for you.
Sure.
Again, Mrs., did you have, do you have reserves? Like do you, something, what's your buffer?
Yeah. Jesus, I'll have to go. Look, I'm sorry. Should I have that with me? But I would say it's in the $50,000.
Oh, if you care. That's based on quite a lot. That's perfect.
You know, something we talked about last year, I think, I'm curious how this is going. Some of the other Lower Marion libraries have been closed for renovation or partly closed. If lighting's all back up now, but has that, is that largely done or are there other libraries that are like?
It's mostly finished, yes. And what surprised us is if you look at our statistics, they haven't gone down that much.
They've actually gone up a little bit.
Yeah. That's because people are just coming in more. Of course, the internet's a big draw and using it for their phones and so forth. But the internet's a big draw and the proximity to get their books in there, whatever they want, you know? So I was surprised though. I expected it not to go up. I expected rather to go down some.
Right, as the traffic kind of went up.
Yes.
Those libraries, but it's actually good to see that.
Yeah. The people are coming in. Well, we got a lot of people in there. And that's what you have here. And I highlighted in red just because this report is not the pain. But you can see, yes, it's still going up a little bit.
Sure.
So and then the value of service report is the one that can convince me who's on our board.
I did have a question just reading this. We had items cataloged. It looks like it went down year over year. Is that the number of new titles that you're putting into the library?
Yes. Yes. And we may have done a few less because we began our budget cover a little bit less last year. So we may have done a few less, but that's what that is. And withdrawing means that they're ones that have been taken off the shelves and people haven't used them and then gone out in circulation for five years or more than we've taken out of circulation. A lot of times we put them on the shelf to sell them in a foyer. But most of the time, we just, you know. There's a couple of ways we can get rid of them. We sell them in our front, on our front lobby. Or there's, one of our guys goes out to something called World Books and another one, and they buy books. In fact, you could sell your own books on World Books if you wanted to. You just go in and you put in the barcode and they'll tell you how much they'll give you. And then we box them all up and we send them to them. It's not a lot of money, but it's something.
At least they're being used somewhere.
That's right. They're being used. That's exactly right. They're being used plus we're getting a little bit of money from it. Not just throwing it away.
I'm just thinking aloud here like, this, by the way, this is always the, of all the subsidiary organizations, financial presentations, yours are always the most thorough and very understandable, so I really appreciate that. Are there any opportunities, have you guys talked, the office and the library, at all about some of the ancillary costs? Your biggest cost is always payroll and then McLink and some of those other items. But are there places where the library's spending and the office is spending and maybe some of the other organizations, the community building, you're spending on cleaning or telecom or other things where we work together a little bit and might be able to save some pennies?
No, not really. I mean, the services that, there are things like for the building, like electricity and all of that comes out of the borough's budget and so we don't have that. The American Legion is pretty much standalone and the Kennedy, we don't use it as much as we would like to.
You're not paying for your internet access, are you?
Yeah.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. That's where we can help.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to pay for your internet access. That would be in our Comcast agreement. So that's a savings we can.
Okay. Well, we must talk about that because it's part of our McLink billing.
You've got certain security structures with McLink.
Yeah. Yes. It's part of our McLink and so I'm sure that I'm going to be able to.
It's worth a shot.
It is worth a shot. Yeah.
That's a lot of savings.
Especially keeping around all that wireless traffic over.
Yeah. Right, right. Good point.
All right. Well, we'll.
That's a good point.
Our franchise agreements allow us to have free service to schools and libraries and borough buildings.
All right. Well, let me see what the rules and regulations are in terms of being part of their partnership.
Okay.
Sean, is this?
And there is certain sharing just baked into the fact that the library's in a borough building and then maybe some capital costs come up there to by the borough. So that's there too.
Okay.
Right. Okay. We don't really have anything just with capital because that's the building.
Right. The building is part of property anyways.
Right.
Budget. Okay. Great. Sean, is this, as it is in this presentation, is that what's reflected in the budget that we'll see later?
Yes, it is reflected in the budget.
Because that's a good baseline.
The only other piece of information I'd suggest that would help you guys out is a payroll report. A year-to-date payroll report of employees and we can deduce rates and hours that way. It'll just help us.
As we benchmark the other.
Yeah.
Right.
Borough staff too.
Yeah.
Okay. I can actually give you that now because I thought you might ask, so I prepared. We are, we pay less than Lower Marion pays. But maybe that's where it is. We've been bringing, the last couple of, I would appreciate you keeping that very confidential, obviously people's salaries, okay?
But you don't have a budget.
The, what you see here is the percent increases in the budget, okay? And so you'll see the 3% for some and then there's a couple of people, well, as you can see, the 10% is a dollar. All right. And the other two are, go ahead.
Was that my utterance that stopped you? I'm sorry. What is, do you know what your overall yearly hourly is? How many?
Yes. Oh, I have a complete spreadsheet. You want that? Okay. I'll have to, I'll have to send you that somehow. Yes, I have a complete spreadsheet. Because it varies. That's how we compute because everybody's hours are different. So for example, a person making $11 an hour times whatever.
Yeah. So if you're open.
But we have to keep it, I'm sorry, but I have to keep it under 25 hours because of the part-time thing.
So if you're open X a number of hours a year and you like to have two, three, four, how many people on staff at all times? That sort of information is.
Okay. Preferably at least two. However, last week we had some illnesses, so it got down to one. But that's usually not that way. Right. We had a scramble, sorry.
Well, thank you so much for pulling everything together.
Thank you for the information.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to the rest of it. Absolutely.
No problem. Yeah. If you have any other questions, you know where to reach me.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Second item for tonight, Bob, I thought this had been kicked off already for coming in, is police pension. And we've got Representative C-Biz here to help us understand a little bit about what I think is actually our biggest issue that we have to understand in our budget, not just this year, but over the next five years. So and that's a rough summary for the public here that haven't been, I don't see one of us either already, as a couple of them have, is that we've had, and we'll get a more detailed explanation here in a second, changes in the actuarial valuation ascribed to the pension fund liabilities, particularly the police pension. It also affects the non-uniformed employee pension as well. But that's meant that our actuarially calculated pension liability has gone from $400,000 to $500,000. Very steeply up over the past two years to, in this year's, this should be 2015 audited financials, 2.4 million with the base set of actuarial assumptions. And we just want to understand from the folks who do the calculations, what does that mean? You know, over what time period is that liability realized? What should we be doing proactively to get ourselves back toward funded status? And, you know, help us understand as we think about the budget going forward, there's a minimum municipal obligation that we've been making every year that comes out of that calculation. But how much, if any, additional to that in each year should we be thinking of putting toward closing that gap so that we're not landing on somebody who has one of those pensions and being short that some years that long? So if I could kick it over to you for kind of a little background?
Sure. A little background. So what you, what you've seen and what you've referenced most recently is kind of the FASB side of things, so the accounting side, the accrual basis of having a pension plan that the borough sponsors. Previous to this, they were governed under governmental accounting standards, '25 and '27. Those have been amended under '67, '68 and sweeping changes, a lot more disclosure. Front and center, now the unfunded liability hits the balance sheet of the borough. Whereas before, you accounted for it basically on a cash basis. Whatever your MMO was is what went on the balance sheet. There was not a lot of visibility and transparency front and center on the pension plan as there is required now. The same changes are going to happen for O-PED. So that's just a little lead-in there. Very similar way of accounting for it. Take a 10-page report and turn it into 20. That's what's going to happen. And the unfunded liability going to the balance sheet, you'll have less flexibility in your interest rate assumption. And I'll get to that when we touch on O-PED. So some of the, so what this report does not do is determine your MMO.
Right.
Your MMO is calculated under Act 205 and then Act 600 prescribes the benefits payable to uniformed employees of municipalities. So what you have is an every other year evaluation, every odd calendar year, we do a valuation, which is a different report than this. And that sets forth the following two years' MMO. So some of the numbers from that report are used to generate your MMO in the following two years. So the '15 valuation was used for '16 and '17's MMO. When we did the 2015 valuation, one of the things we do as the actuary is, on a plan like a pension plan where you're making a promised payment at a future date for someone's lifetime, is you need to bring all those future payments back to today into a present value. One of the important things is if you're going to make some payment for someone's lifetime is an appropriate assumption for how long those people will live. So there's published mortality tables and you look at them. But in a plan like this, that's so small, you'll have long periods of time with no mortality. So, you know, you can't do your own study. You don't have a credible size group to say, well, we're going to, we're going to use this. You need to follow the herd and use more current statistics based on broad studies, which basically says, if you look at tables from the '80s and the early 2000s, in general, people are living longer now than they were then to the tune of a couple of years.
So there's nothing we can do about that?
There's really nothing, you know, if you wanted to say, I'd really like to go back to the 1980 mortality table. Yeah, you know, both tables are going to say that a portion of your population is going to pass away each year. But we have many, many years where that's a zero. So almost any assumption we do is a little bit tough to justify. But again, conservatism in my mind rules the day on something like that. If you're not going to account for those extra two years of payments, you're going to find yourself down the road without enough money in the trust to make those payments. The other primary assumption is you have a trust fund with assets set aside to make these payments. What will that trust earn? You have financial advisors, you have an asset allocation. A lot of times it's a traditional mix, sometimes 60-40. Well, we all know what fixed income does right now, which is basically nothing. So it's a lot of pressure on equities. And the prior assumption is probably an 8% annual rate of return. Even under a 70-30 mix, I'm not seeing anything to support it. So we had a lot of discussions with the trustees of the pension plan and we ultimately landed on seven. So the way that a present value works, remember I said you have, you have these ongoing payments to a few people, future payments to the officers still working. They're going to go out to some period of time in the future, bring them back to today at a present value. When you do that at 8% and then you change that interest rate to seven, the relationship is a seesaw. The interest rate's on one end of the seesaw and the liability is on the other. When you lower one, the other side goes up. So that is a large portion of the increase in the plan's liability. The assets stay the same. And so when you, when you raise a liability and the assets stay the same, there's your unfunded liability. And the Act 205 funding requirements dictate how long you take to pay those back. So there is a mechanism in place to work toward paying off the unfunded liability. I believe it's maybe 12 years out if everything stayed the same and all of our assumptions hit. But it's, you know, you're going to have an officer retire and you're going to replace it with a new one. So this is a generational plan, whereas a lot of corporate plans now are shut down. They're just in kind of slow, you know, slow, slow death mode. They're going to work themselves out of their problem eventually. So what do you do to close the gap on liability? In comes GASB 68. Now it's front and center. You have the funded liability on the borough's balance sheet. And now you have pension expense under GASB 68, whereas before your, your operating expense was your MMO payment. Now it's a accrual basis of accounting where you're, you have, okay, what's one year's worth of accrual of pension benefits? Interest on our liability. Well, we expect our assets to perform at a certain rate. That comes off. And where we have some amortization payments, that's GASB 67 and 68 prescribe how long those are and they're very short. And that's the same thing that's going to happen to O-PED. They've taken the amount of time that you recognize those events and they've really shortened them.
It looked like it was five, eight years.
That's on, yeah. It may even be better if we, if we look at a couple of pages. Kind of give a little bit of context. I won't spend any time on the commentary pages. They're kind of self-explanatory. It tells you, here's our report and what it does and there's other things that GASB requires that aren't in our report. You'll have to go to them somewhere else. Page three, inactive employees and beneficiaries. You have nine people receiving pension benefits today as of 1/115. You have five active officers. And this page further breaks down the liability, service costs, that's that number. $113,000 is the fancy way of saying that's what one year of accrual is. And average remaining service life. So the way that GASB makes you, so let's say we have gains or losses. Like I said, we make certain assumptions. So you need to measure how you performed against those assumptions. And they either kicks out gains or losses. If you have investment activity greater than 7%, it's a gain. If it's lower, you have a loss. You don't recognize those all at once. You spread them out. Asset losses, gains are a flat five-year amortization. Anything else, assumption changes, actuarial gains or losses, those are spread out over the remaining service lives of the entire population. So the five officers have future years of service attributable to them. The nine inactive is their future service is zero. So you, so you take the sum of the, of the five and divide it by 14. That's how you get short. And the same, the same concept is going to happen under the O-PED-GASB pronouncements. So that's kind of how that works.
That's a very bold, simple question. Looking for a simple answer, obviously a complex way to get there. Each officer that we have, let's say they have an average salary of $85,000 or whatever you use as an average. I don't want to make up an average. What does it cost us per year towards the pension per officer that's on? So when you look at, when you look at the whole package, you know, let's just use 85 as a core number, 85 for salary, $3,000 for uniforms, you know, $20,000 to $30,000 for healthcare, et cetera. What do we medley, when we look at, do we have five or six or seven officers? What do we use as a number per officer cost? I know, I know the whole concept of it stretches out, but how do you get back to?
The work that we do is run out the individual level and aggregate it into one number for reporting purposes. So we will collect the data from Sean on the actual comp. So we have comp history for them. Their benefits are based on an average of comp, 50% of comp if they get full, full retirement. And you can express that in terms of what's the ratio to the benefits to payroll? And that's really what your one-year cost is, that accrual each year, that accrual of benefits. In the police plans that I see, it's, it's in the low to mid 20% of pay. So if you have a million dollars of payroll, you're going to be looking at about $200,000 of annual accrual of benefit.
Yes. And then I assume at the end of the $17,000, not that you have to kind of put in your last year towards. That's a very helpful note, I think.
And that's assuming that the pension isn't funded.
And that is showing in my other report. So we're going to do that again, 1117. But I can go through that report at another time or over a call, whatever you want to do, to give you context into where the MMO comes from. That might be valuable at a later point to.
For my purposes.
Keep looking at that.
That's good. That's good.
So here, go ahead.
Go ahead. Questions are good because I can, I'll go on and on and I know it's really exciting.
I mean, so the big picture question for me is this, like right now, we've got a liability that's built up based on the present value of the asset pool and expected returns at a rate which, I don't know. I don't know if 7% is the right rate going forward or whether that's going to be revisited.
Right.
And present value of liability certainly makes some assumptions about mortality because they're probably fairly sensitive to change in those assumptions. But let's just assume that that calculation is right for now. I'm going to move. Over what period should we be thinking about closing that gap and returning the plan to funded status? And if we're just making the MMO payment, over what period would it naturally return our funded status if nothing else changed?
Right. So if I don't think it says it in here. Page nine. So as of 1/1/2015, I'm in the bottom half of the page, remaining amortization period is 12 years. So the way that the Act 205 funding rules work is designed to fully fund the plan over, over time. The MMO is comprised of that accrual of benefits for the years. That's your pay-as-you-go cost. If the plan uses trust assets to pay certain administrative expenses, that's loaded back in there. So you pay the trust back. And then you pay off your amortizations, which are historical gains and losses, plan changes, assumption changes, you name it. They all get baked in there. They're all paid off over time. But that's the way the funding rules work. It's designed to, that if your assumptions hit and you continue to make those. It's designed to, that if your assumptions hit and you continue to make those payments, eventually you'll, you'll bring the plan to full funding. So that's a rough estimate. One of the components of doing this valuation is you need to do long-range projections of the assets, which, which means you have to project out the contributions, project out the benefit payments. The GASB rules are such that you're allowed to use your assumed rate of return to discount those future payments unless you have a depletion date out in the future. So if we ran your numbers, and this is not happening right now, if you ran your numbers and it showed in, in forty years you were going to run out of money and not have enough cash in the, in the police trust fund to make the payments, you have to stop them and re-measure the liabilities at a municipal bond rate. So you, you end up with a blended discount rate. Uni-bond rates are sub-three percent right now. So if you knew what happened when you went from eight to seven, going from seven to three would be, would be huge, so your unfunded liability would grow exponentially. There is no such forecast on a plan like this, partly because the math is gonna work. If you hit your assumptions, you'll be fine, and the Act two oh five funding rules are designed to avoid such a, such calamity. So that's, that's the good thing. So we do that, so we can give you a sense of where MMOs are going to go, and again, it's, it's caveat on it, the assumptions need to come true, they need to run out. So if you're making reasonable assumptions, we'll assume they're gonna, they're gonna happen into the future, and we can give you a sense of where MMOs are heading.
Can you tell us what those, specify what those assumptions are?
It's the seven percent that I, that I, that I talked about. There's other assumptions in the report, but the primary ones that drive the liability are the asset return and the life expectancy.
Do the projected salary increases of four percent and cost of living increases of three percent have much impact?
They, they do to some extent. If you have officers that are close to retirement, changing that salary growth assumption doesn't really have much of an impact. Most of the pension's been accrued already anyway, at their current, at their true salary levels. And Act two oh five has some older rules in it where if you set your asset return assumption at seven percent, or let's say you, you could do it and you wanted to set it at nine, so that you have a nice low liability, well, you can't now assume that your salary increase growth is three. They will not let you play outside of a three percentage point move. So you'd have to assume that your salary growth is six percent then. So they, they don't let you move one without the other, unless you go through a whole study to justify what your, why your assumption varies so much from your growth on assets assumption. And the COLA's negotiated. That three percent is a, it doesn't mean they exactly get three percent a year, some years it's less than that, some years it might be more, but over the long term. And then their Act six hundred caps a COLA, so it's not three percent forever. It's, once they hit the cap, then officers get no more COLAs.
Is it a relatively straightforward thing for you to do to, in your model, change the rate of return assumption and to change the, let's call it excess contribution over the MMO annually? I wonder if, if that's something you could run in the next little bit.
You mean changing the assumption to value liability, or, or what if our assets outperform? Is that what you mean? Like actual term person?
What a nice thing to say.
I should say underperform, so you have kind of that, that stress test.
No, so here's kinda what I'm thinking, is we're going into our budget cycle here, we're gonna have a preliminary review over the next month of kinda the operating budget of the borough. We haven't really, we haven't dug, this is the first slightly deep dig tonight into pensions.
So now the assumptions are in the projected budget at this point?
The police pension MMO is in the budget.
An increase, a suggested increase?
No.
What we played last year?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
So, we're seeing here scheduled contributions from a hundred five to a hundred eighty-one two thousand on page nine. So we already, did we already put the hundred eighty-one in? Is this, we're just, we're paying out what we have from last year, going toward two thousand, I guess we're at two thousand seventeen by eight fifty-nine and out. What numbers are you using from this conversation?
Are you using numbers from this conversation, or are we using another set of numbers?
Yeah, we're using pre-dated, like, last year plus three percent?
No, we're using the minimum municipal obligation, which is also included in your, your packet, which for the police pension fund is...
Just under two ninety.
Just under two ninety. We had two options presented to us by Savitz. One was to reduce that, reduce that contribution. We were, we were able to elect to reduce our net contribution by a little under three thousand dollars if we electively reduced that if we wanted to. That would only, in conversations with Marguerite, that would only be prudent to do if the borough was in overall financial stress and it really needed that forty thousand dollars today to meet its obligations today, but the borough's not in that situation, so we're not going to elect, or I'm recommending we not elect to take that relief, that optional relief and make the full MMO, which is, as Dave said, a little less than two ninety.
So what are we suggesting increases from last year then? What's two thousand sixteen versus two thousand seventeen suggested amount, much, we're seeing all these numbers. Is it in here or is it somewhere?
Twenty sixteen's MMO?
Yeah.
It was about two sixty-five.
And what are we suggesting for this year?
I think it's probably already been made.
Two ninety-one.
Two ninety.
So where, where's the crisis now? Well, there's a crisis right now, here.
In a nutshell, here's what's going on, in, in my view, is this is the MMO year over year.
Yeah. That's historical, that chart, that page.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna do the historical, so you can understand the context here. It was two thousand thirteen, a hundred and ten, then a hundred and five, then in two thousand fifteen, a hundred eighty-one, and two sixty, then two ninety. And with that, because of the change in obligations, change in calculations, we now have this underfunded status also. And we're still assuming a seven percent per annum rate of return, which, as a guy who's at the, you know, early end of being a heavy-duty taxpayer for the next, like, little while, while everyone's retiring, seems a little high still.
You gotta buy alternatives.
To give you an order of magnitude, if you look at page six. At the bottom is the plan's sensitivity to changing that assumption.
Yeah.
So right now, the net pension liability, which is the, the unfunded liability, is two point four million. If we were to go down a full hundred basis points, it would be two point nine.
Yeah.
And then if you go the other way...
It was roughly linear, so if you went down five percent, it'd be...
It's pretty close, yeah.
Pretty close. So, I mean, here, here's kinda what I would like to have in hand if possible before we punch a ticket on our twenty seventeen budget. For this purpose would be just a sensitivity table, you know, across the, down the rows, seven percent, six percent, five percent, in sort of long-term rate of return assumption. Assume the mortality tables are what they are.
Yeah, I'm inclined to leave them where we've set them now until they're, so, this is, there's a large group called the Society of Actuaries, and they recently did the large mortality study for corporate pension plans. They're in the middle of doing one for public pension plans. The reason why we didn't jump on to that brand-new table is we wanna see if there is a different outlook in terms of current mortality statistics in, in public entities rather than private corporations, and we'll evaluate that table when it comes out and see if it's appropriate.
So that'd be just, you know, three rows, 'cause I don't think we need to get any finer grain than that, just to see how, how low the rate could go. And then across the columns, and let me know which of these two options is easier to deliver given your model. Either the column variable be the years to, to bring to funded status from five years up to twelve years, and have the calculation of the table be, what should the annual contribution be? Instead of the MMO, the actual MMO?
MMO plus.
MMO plus. Or for fixed dollar MMOs, it's the years that it would take to break even.
You do this for old municipalities, I assume?
Every once in a while, they'll, they'll ask for something like this. A lot of them aren't, aren't looking to, to lower their rate of return, they wanna...
Keep going to nine, go with the seven percent.
Don't touch my balance sheet.
May I ask a question? You guys want to?
That would be super helpful.
Hi, I'm Barbara Fortner. I didn't get you...
Hi, Avery.
Dave, I kinda guessed that from this. I used to work for Terrence Watson in retirement, so. It's been a while though since I did a lot of the actuarial work, I was more on the administrative side in later years, but I'm listening to this, and I'm also in Borough Council, so I have some questions, and just in my mind. And one of the things that I've not been clear on, but I think it's becoming clear from hearing this, it sounds like the borough's funding policy has been just to fund the MMO every year, to contribute.
Which is, which is the predominant funding policy.
Yeah, doesn't surprise me.
The MMO calculation comes out, we will give that to them.
You're like, go on, that's my contribution.
It's about to boom, and then state aid comes in to offset that.
Yeah.
And I have one or two townships that will use a state aid as a supplement to the full MMO, but that's, it's not normal.
Right. And, and it looks like, you know, until GASB was changed, that was, that worked well.
It did, because it was really, there, it didn't hit the financial state. Only the MMO did.
Right. So the question that I have right now is just, what should our goal be? Should our goal be to be one hundred percent funded? That's kind of what it sounds like we're talking about, but I'm like, is that really, is that, is that what GASB is anticipating?
Well, remember too, that, that...
I mean, I know we don't wanna be fifty percent...
A hundred percent funding certainly impacts the balance sheet, which is gonna flow through to bond ratings.
Right.
So, you know, you tell me what the needs are of, of the borough, if you're not borrowing, if you're not, if you're not floating bonds, then it may make sense to get there over time, but if you're having trouble issuing debt, then you have to approve the balance sheet. You know, you may need to, but again, if you need, if you need cash, you really, probably don't need it for the pension plan, you need it for other things.
So it's, it's not like there's a requirement to be a hundred percent funded at some point? This is, this is...
The auditor general will publish, so you fall into distress levels.
We don't wanna do that.
Certain thresholds, well, there are, everybody's in one or another. You're either over ninety percent, which most are not.
We did cross a boundary, I think.
You probably went from, from status one to status two, and they'll make you write a nice letter and put together a, you know, administrative improvement plan, and if they're, if you're at a really poor distress level, there are some mandatory remedies you have to take, such as if you have more than one, if you had a police and a non-uniform fund, and you were managing them both, where you had to aggregate assets and theoretically get, you know, more efficiency through your investments that way. And there's a couple of other things. But if, you know, if you're not staring down those things, then it becomes, the, the MMO's one thing, can you afford to go higher? I would say pension plans are, it's either now or later. You're gonna make those contributions, you know, at the end of the day, the scale has to balance. You've got only a certain, certain sources of inflow to the plan and a few sources of outflow, and on the last day, the scales have to balance.
But it's not like there's a, here's a date out at a certain point where you should be a hundred percent funded, maybe the answer is, at a certain point, we wanna be ninety percent funded. I mean, I, you know, it's like this, I feel like we need to have some of those conversations too, to decide, how does this all fit into everything else?
And remember, this is a, this is a generational plan, so as, as one leaves, another comes in.
Yeah, so it's never gonna be done, you know, it's, yeah, unless you close the plan, which, yeah, I can't see that happening.
And that's, that's why I think that some kind of table we're talking about would be a good tool for us in council to have for that discussion. And say, well, what time period do we wanna bring this back to funded status, and how much is that gonna cost us annually to do that relative to making the MMO?
And, and I'm thinking then too, when you say that, you're saying a hundred percent funded status, right? And is that, I mean, because if, if it's, you know, if it's something less than that, it would be something different. So, you know, maybe you start with that and recognize, oh, that's where that would get us, let's see, and what does it mean if we're not a hundred percent funded, or ninety percent funded, or whatever? What, what does that mean to other things?
When, when you do that analysis, if there's any, I hate to give heuristic guidance, but rule of thumb is to say like, hey, if you're getting to a hundred percent funded in five years, it's roughly, you can approximate it as being linear, so you'd be eighty percent funded in four years. You're getting to funded a hundred percent in ten years, you'd be at ninety percent in nine years, that's probably long, but whatever the kind of, if there is some kind of heuristic we should have in mind to know, like, hey, if it's ten years to get to a hundred percent, it's X years to get to.
The only thing I can think of as being, being a hundred percent or more funded is, they do not, the state does not give you state aid to an overfunded plan.
Okay, that's good to know, too.
So, but it's five officers, it's roughly seven thousand a man.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, thirty-five thousand bucks that you, but then again, your MMO would be close to zero if you were fully funded. You would pay as you go, and if you have excess assets, you can use that to offset the accrual cost.
Gotcha, okay. I know you don't wanna talk about OPEB without, but just at a high level, here's, here's my understanding of what has been going on with OPEB, is it's moving into this regime too. We've been making the annual sort of actual cash cost hanging as you go.
Which is the most common way of sponsoring and maintaining an OPEB plan.
But as a result, up through twenty fifteen, we've accrued this future liability, which again is based on present values.
Yes.
Like one point eight million dollars for the police force.
And that's at, I think, a five percent discount rate, so what you do, you don't have a trust fund, so you're using kind of your own borough's internal rate of return on the general fund, which I believe was set at five, in the last report that I just saw as a draft, it was five. GASB seventy, seventy-four, seventy-five is going to change that to be a municipal bond rate if you're not funding it. So even a small trust fund maybe can mitigate the impact of a very low municipal bond rate of being, it's gonna force your hand, you're not gonna have a choice as to what interest rate you use.
And so, I guess, what's the, what are municipalities doing to deal with that? I guess that might be the conversation we wanna have with your colleague.
And some are funding, so in PA, in the other clients that I have, some are funding, some a long time ago set aside a pool of assets and have not touched it, and they've paid as they've paid as you go since then, but it's roughly half-funded. Now, this is a pretty large non-uniform and uniform participation in this OPEB plan. And two others have done recent studies where they said, look, what does it look like if we continue to pay as we go, if we fund, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year for this period of time, what do our numbers look like? And we've gone through exercises like that, but some of them are starting to put funds away, to the tune of, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty a year, it may scale up in, in four years to two hundred, and then they'll take a look at where they stand from there. But it just starts to scratch away at the liability, but now they have a trust fund in place where you can use a reasonable asset rate of return assumption instead of defaulting to municipal bond.
How, at what point, at what percent of the liability would have to be funded in a trust fund for you to be able to flip over to...
That I don't know.
That'd be one good follow-up question for your colleague. The, the other one would be, as you can imagine, we probably wanna do a similar sensitivity analysis on getting to some useful point with regard to that, so if you could have that conversation before she comes back for the next meeting, that would be, that would be helpful, some advancement in the meantime. Okay. Any other questions?
Sure.
What if anything comes to mind with survivor benefits with the pension? Is there a calculation of that if you're married?
It, it is valued, so if an officer is married, and we assume that they are, so an officer retires and starts getting, you know, it's like it's three thousand dollars a month and they're married, they pass away, there is an automatic survivor benefit, fifty percent continues to the spouse for her lifetime. That's, that is factored in to, to the liability, absolutely.
We've got, any other questions for you guys?
You guys have been great, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
It's really helpful, thank you.
And look forward to talking to you for a lot more over the next couple of months.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So committee, I have one more item to get through, and that's capital spending over this twenty seventeen and subsequent years. This is gonna be an area where, as Shaun will present a little bit later, we put the budget together, really in the first edition focused on...
Thanks very much.
Good night, thank you.
On operating costs and sort of known current costs, and the two things that are, that we're gonna need to give policy, you know, it's got three days, two main things that we're gonna need to give policy guidance on are, how do we wanna handle these pension liabilities, how do we wanna handle the OPEB, and how do we wanna handle capital contributions, capital... And how do we want to handle capital contributions, capital spending, capital projects? Because that's really, those are policy decisions for council, right, to say what's actually on our priority stack for next year?
Right.
And possibly the year after, you know, what period do you want to fund it? So, I'm trying to think of the best way, I'd like your feedback, what do you think the best way is for us to get to the point by the time we get to the beginning of December to have given our, you know, consolidated opinions to, these are the things we should be, these are the capital projects we should be spending money on next year, and here's how much it's going to cost, and here's how it would cover the next couple of years. My thought was, we've got a list, a laundry list of all, I think exhaustive number of lists, of all the products that people have mentioned, from, you know, community building refurbishments, to roof repairs, to park improvements, to new furniture, yes, office furniture, I think there's a whole boatload of stuff in there. And at one point, we don't have, we have good costs on a few of the big ones, like the bridge and the roof here, which was actually mostly this year, right?
Yeah.
So, there's some things we actually take.
Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen.
Our pre-con meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, yeah.
Wow.
So, should be done.
So, there might be a couple of things we need to clock that list, because they're actually getting done this year, but.
A few capital projects are getting done this year.
Yeah, so we'll probably need to scrub that, but we have a pretty good list of things that people have mentioned, there might be a couple additions to it. What I was thinking of doing was saying, here's that list, and here's, like, we took a very rough order of magnitude estimate of how much these things have cost, like a thousand, a hundred thousand, there were some bigger ones. All of that added up to about a million, a million and three.
That's it?
It'll be more like a million and five when we chuck in a couple of new things, like the downtown park, and there were a couple other things people brought up lately that would knock up a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Probably twenty years of the park.
Yeah, so, that's the thing, it's like, everyone's going to have different policy preferences, so my thought is we, everybody take a copy of that thing, and I can try to automate it in some ways, it's easy for people to do it, but you say, like, which of these things do I think we should do next year? And then we can bring them all together and have a conversation about, like, on average, what people want to do.
I think you got two things running currently. You know, if you look at a ten, fifteen, or twenty-year payout, that's something that we have to decide how we want to handle money going forward, and then, is it a value of that worth to the community?
Yeah.
That's more of a policy, to me, there's, one's more of a strategic way, the other is a policy. So, is it worth spending a hundred thousand dollars on X? Or is that something that we're never going to, you know, some are pushing to me, like, this pushback, the way, oh, we'll do it in two years, we'll have more money. Either worth it or it's not worth it.
Right.
So, you know, that's a good point. I'm not saying everything I want's worth it, but it's worth it more today than it is in two years, because we've found, we've seen in two years, interest rates can go up, cost of doing, you know, if you happen to school district, and you hold off on new buildings, it's the cost of hard money because the cost of construction.
Absolutely.
So, instead of doing it, like, instead of taking the list and having everybody say, yeah, maybe you can take the list and have a rank.
Yeah.
Rank order.
I don't think it's worth it, I just think it's either, you say, yes, it's worth spending X for this, or it's a nice idea, but it's not going to, you know, make it.
I think there's a really important piece of misinformation missing.
Yeah.
From this decision process, and that is the actual professionally estimated values of the projects.
Right, there's that.
All we did at this point was.
Very good, very good.
Throw darts.
Sure.
From twenty feet away.
Yeah.
You have to start spending money to do this, you know, that happens.
No, I think we should be thinking about getting professional help to assess the condition of our capital assets, use our borough engineer and those resources to understand what it's really going to take in real dollar values to do the things on the laundry list. And I don't think it's going to be possible to have any grounded conversation about what those costs are going to look like and what we should, should or shouldn't borrow until we have that information in our hands.
The only problem going on in so is we've been talking about these for a while now with the big equal budget, I don't know, some of them we've been talking about for a while, but some are, you know.
The borough has operated without a capital plan, which is not a good way to manage your infrastructure.
Yeah.
Good point.
So, here's kind of my macro suggestion on that. I agree with you, we need to actually do the work and come up with real numbers for these things, but we know we don't want to delay doing some of the things, and we know we might not be able to delay doing some things next year, like the bridge might get done next year, and there are calls for.
The bridge is not on the palette for next year, it is a two thousand eighteen project from the last.
The last, yeah. In any case, I think we can, at least by having everybody say, like, these are the ones that are definitely guesses, the ones that are kind of mapped out, we can figure that there's some amount of capital spending we're going to want to do next year. And whether that gets realized in the form of actually executing on the projects, or if it just means we sock away that much money next year and execute the projects when the natural life cycle of those projects allows them to be done.
Right.
Then at least we've not, not put away money.
Yeah.
For projects that we know we want to do.
Yeah.
At least that, you know, first approximation, right amount of money.
I think we should, I think the borough should look at creating a process by which it continually evaluates its capital resources, borrows at regular intervals, not when, every time a project comes up, but at regular intervals that are spaced out by twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight months, so that we save on borrowing costs. And we can consult and look at our plan to figure out what it is we're going to accomplish with this borrowing. We can also, if we take our time, leverage grant money, which the borough is doing a little bit with Windsor Avenue and Green Street, which is quite well, but there's other opportunities to leverage grants and reduce costs to the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, let's make sure that gets baked into the budget conversation.
Right.
So, when do we have that conversation?
Well, we're going to start that conversation in the next meeting.
About seven minutes.
And continue it at the next Finance Administration Committee.
For sure.
And council meetings in December. Getting, we're not going to be in position to get to a full five-year capital plan during this budget cycle, because I aren't.
No.
I mean, this is.
I was like, I wasn't expecting that, right? I'm going to have a heart attack.
Yeah, ambitiously mid-two thousand seventeen.
With quadruple stuff?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, that's a bigger problem than with.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So, that's what I'm saying, we need to do something that's smaller work, but will get us like thirty to fifty percent of the answer, and a right enough answer that we aren't doing something totally wrong next year.
Yeah.
And are actually making sure we face.
Actionable, we can live with it, right?
Enough capital spending in our budget next year that we're not putting ourselves in a, you know.
I like it.
So, do you guys have feedback about how we should use our budget list to kind of get ourselves there quickly? Let me know, I'll toy with it.
Yeah, I, you might have to, I had a little crash. You might have to ask you to resend it, because you know I don't back up, I probably should.
Do you have a, any, anything else for Finance Administration before recess?
Yeah.